On this road, do you want to go?
Yeah.
So you want me to turn my mic off?
It's on.
No, it ain't.
Well, you have to turn your own mics on and off, too. So make sure if you talk that your green light's on.
Huh?
Yes.
I have enough trouble getting myself in trouble with that.
Does it say six? No, you don't. Good evening, like to welcome everyone to the November twenty-sixth, Minnesota Planning and Zoning Commission. Roll call.
Manson.
Present.
McCursin. Schultz.
Here.
Timlin.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Commissioner Fisher is absent this evening.
Under General Business, approve the Planning Commission Agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the Planning Commission Agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approve minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held on October the twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Everybody read those. Any additions or corrections? Roll call. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disclosure of conflict of interest, we have any? Disclosure of outside communications regarding commission business? Okay. Call to the public, members of the public who wish to address the Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Any presentations for the information purposes only. No action will be taken, there is a four-minute time limit. Do we have anybody to like to address the... Saying none, we'll move on. Public hearing, consider text amendment for updating development procedures. Brad?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's ahead before you tonight is a ongoing item from our discussion on October twenty-second for updating our development procedures, really codifying our standard practices. And we went through a lot of the discussion on how when the city accepts easements and rights away, and the procedures that we typically go through, and we work with our building department on when we accept water lines, sewer lines, right-of-way roads, sidewalks, all those things. And basically, we just standardized what we've been doing in practice, and the code didn't match what our practices had been. I think that was pretty straightforward discussion. And the part that we really zeroed in on was the sidewalk issue, and how to deal with when a lot doesn't go, or doesn't get built on, or maybe gets sold, and the owner changes their mind, and it just sits there vacant. And then at some point, you've got a sort of a piano keys section of a neighborhood where all of a sudden you can walk down a sidewalk, you gotta jump out in the street, back on the sidewalk, back into the street. And what we talked to you about, at least what we initially proposed, was some sort of upfront bond, where the developer would be required to guarantee at some point that they would be required to put in those sidewalks, whether or not the lot was built on with a residential structure. Of course, there were some issues that came up as well with the developer sells all the lots, and it's the owner that has the bonus to build the sidewalk, or they sell the development to a different, you know, developer. And does that relieve them of the bond, or we have to get a new bond from the new developer? And so we kind of really were a bit of a standstill, we also were discussing, well, even how much does the bond need to be? Is it fifty percent, seventy-five, a hundred, even Ian suggested maybe perhaps over a hundred percent to account for inflation, should the sidewalks need to be built at a later date. So we kind of struggled with all these, and then also with some direction from the Planning Commission. I did contact several communities. Those included Oletha, Lenexa, and Gardner, those are in your staff reports. I did get a call back from the City of Shawnee late Friday afternoon, so I didn't get any of that information in the staff report. But by and large, they all have the same procedure. If it doesn't get built on, nothing happens. And all of these communities said, at some point, they've actually gone back with city funds to infill some of these locations. And that's kind of what we're trying to avoid, is just at some point using general tax dollars for something that should have been passed on to either the resident who has bought the house, or the developer. So we really couldn't come to terms with or getting any real guidance from some of the other cities within Johnson County. So then Mike and I had a little bit of a pow-wow, and we talked to Patrick, the city attorney, and asked if there was some way that we could sort of compel the owner after some period of time, sort of like we do with property nuisance. If you don't mow your grass, we can mow it for you, and then send you your bill, and put it on your taxes if you don't take care of it. Now, those statutes don't apply particularly to sidewalks. However, as you can see now in your staff reports, some of the things that our city attorney, Patrick, put together is, and he called them delayed improvements, because there could be more items. I mean, we're focusing on sidewalks, but if there was some sort of storm drainage issue, or something along those lines, that the city engineer deems necessary, we can compel with a notification on your title when the property is sold, that within a certain period of time sidewalks are going to be going in. And it will be on the owner's expense. Now, if you s... And at some point, we have the ability with this plan to require that. Now, one of the questions that we had was, you know, how long do we wait? Is it five years? Is it ten years? I put in ten years, Mike had suggested five years for this delayed improvement. And so we really weren't particularly clear on whether or not we felt that five or ten years. And then I've talked to Don, a part, a little bit about Arbor Ridge, and we're here almost three years in, and he sold twenty-four lots out of the thirty-seven. So, you know, in five years, probably he'll be done in phase one, but, you know, things slow down. And then all of a sudden, you know, is this five years too quick? And that's, I guess, the one thing, I put in ten years, and I said, Mike suggested five. So I don't know if there's a happy medium in there, or what we'd do with that. So that's kind of where we're at with the sidewalk, and then, once again, we call it a delayed improvement. Roger, maybe you can speak for that, as an attorney might look at it, but that's the direction we were given from Patrick. So I guess at this point, I'll stand for any questions, if you had anything to add, Mike, you can...
No, I think you said it pretty well, Brad. Yeah, the delayed improvement thing was something that was Patrick's idea. And examples that I could think of are like street lighting, landscaping, maybe the street trees. As examples of where we might want to offer the home builder, or the lot owner, if it's an individual, the flexibility to go ahead and build his home, go ahead and occupy the home. Once we issue that occupancy permit for a home, we don't have any other administrative triggers we can hold to make sure these improvements are done. So in that event, if for whatever reason, there's a large delay in West or in Evergy getting those streetlights in the subdivision, we could conceivably, if it's appropriate, issue occupancy permits, and then have this, the title encumbrance, as our final check, if those streetlights don't get done, then we can call on that encumbrance, do the improvement ourselves, and apply that to the taxes on the lot. But I think, you know, the ninety percent of this is directed solely at the sidewalk. And I think we've been through those, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I think you've had those discussions about the sidewalks, and so that's what, that's where we landed on those. I don't think it'd be a common occurrence at all that other things would be delayed. I just, I can't think of many good examples where that would apply, but there could be some.
I'm curious about the idea of charging a homeowner for a lot after the fact kind of thing. That's like, you know, it's not his fault that the builder didn't do what he was supposed to do, and didn't put a bond down. So, that I have a problem with, the rest of it, I think, we gotta do something. I think we need to make the builder responsible. And if it's going to be delayed, then he needs to pay to do the work that he was going to do anyway. And that way, we're covered, the homeowner future is covered.
I would agree, it's not fair to go back on the homeowner.
Mm-mm.
To have that pop up, if they paid for their house, and they expected all these things to be done, then it's not really fair to come back.
Well, I guess we're talking about vacant lots, though, because if...
But this is delayed, so would that not be...
Well, the way we do it now is if, they won't get their occupancy permit until, so if the structure is going up, and somebody's going to move in, they won't be able to move in until the sidewalk is installed. And then, of course, that doesn't happen until the sale hap... I mean, people won't move in until the sale has occurred, so that needs to be done before the sale happens. So I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't see that going to be an issue where the resident might move in unless, you know, our building official department just totally drops the ball on whether or not...
But if he's getting a building permit, he has established the fact that he is going to build on that property. He's already started and spent a bunch of money on design, everything else. And then all of a sudden, he gets stuck with a twenty thousand dollar sidewalk, or something additional cost, that's not his fault.
Well, it'll go in when the house is going in, it's just one of the very last things that go in. And it's the, the way the builders work, I mean, they just add the cost. If the house is two hundred thousand to build, and the sidewalk is three thousand to install, the house, the price of the sale is two hundred and three thousand dollars. So, I mean, the homeowner's ultimately paying for it, one way or another.
I, I think, if I could interject, the normal process, if we have a building permit, that sidewalk will go in, and that's typically the responsibility of the home builder, or the homeowner. I mean, it's their responsibility to make sure that work gets done before they give an occupancy permit. So, in that normal circumstance, I don't think we're going to have this, the problem. It won't come up later for a homeowner who's been in his house for seven years, and all of a sudden gets a letter from the city. The situation we're trying to handle is these lots that might be marginally buildable, or aren't very marketable, that go vacant for a period of time, five or ten years or more, where the sidewalk, there's no connectivity between a sidewalk on a block. There might be one or two. In that case, no one's ever asked for a building permit. The developer might still own the lot, but he may have sold it to another developer, or a third party, or somebody else. In that case, that subsequent owner, or the developer, is put on notice that if after ten years a sidewalk isn't in, you've got to put it in. And that notice is given with his title work, you know, when he goes and purchases the lot. And every, anybody who buys a lot, any home builder who buys a lot sees that notice and thinks, okay, no problem, I'm building a house next year anyway, and they build a house, put a sidewalk in. That's kind of the, that's, the problem we're trying to address is the ones of the vacant lots, or the subdivisions that have just slowed and stalled, and then, you know, we have disconnected sidewalks for people who are living there.
Would we want, if we had, say, three lots, and somebody bought the middle one, and this situation came up, would we require him to put a sidewalk in front of his one lot, even though there was vacant lots on either side?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. The first one is always like that.
Well, yeah, if you got three or more, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a series of stupid lawyer questions.
Okay.
Sorry.
We're fresh out of stupid lawyers.
You got one! Reading this, and I don't mean to bust anybody's hump by these comments, but when I read this, I did not understand it at all. For example, I've got sections A, B, and C. C is the delayed improvements. But if I flip the page to seven point oh-two, I've got deferral of required improvements. So my first stupid lawyer question is, how is deferral of required improvements different than delayed improvements under improvement completion and improvement agreement?
Yeah, deferral relates to an action where the governing body, a process where the governing body takes action.
So it's the same thing, but the governing body does it instead of the city staff?
Yeah.
Why would we have two processes?
Good point.
Second stupid lawyer question. Under section B, there's section one, two, and then there's three, that doesn't have the paragraph break.
Yep.
But three is interesting, because it says, upon completion of the items outlined in seven oh-one, B, one through three...
It should just be one and two.
I'm guessing that's probably right.
Yeah, three should, three is the paragraph that it's in.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, let's assume that we get past this conundrum of having two different ways to defer. This proposed section says first, it's to turn the best interest of the city, that the construction, that the improvements not be constructed until after issuance of the building permit. That's the threshold thing that we get here for, right? So we're going to go ahead and issue a building permit in certain circumstances where we've decided it's best to go ahead and allow for a deferral. So this paragraph one says, if the delayed improvement adjoins, or is part of a lot or parcel, that is subject to an issued building permit, well, hell, we're always going to have an issued building permit here, right? Because that's the first threshold thing.
Right.
All right, so it's always going to be number one, right? No final certificate of occupancy will be issued until the delayed improvement is complete. So if I'm going to issue a building permit with a deferral, the deferral isn't going to last past certificate of occupancy, period.
Well, I thought, so, first of all, so the delayed improvement, what we're getting there at there in paragraph one, I think, as I read it, is that the delayed improve, we're just trying to, trying to, trying to highlight the fact that the delayed improvement only applies if it is directly adjacent to or on the lot in question of the building, that is the subject of the building permit. So we're not going to hold up somebody's building permit for a delayed improvement that happened down the street. That's how, that's, I thought that was...
Maybe the problem is the prefatory language in C, then, because I'm not quite sure I get that. So when it's determined the best interest to not be constructed until after issuance of a building permit...
Yeah, I guess it's restating the same thing.
I'm just saying, I think, if this is Patrick's work, he, I think, didn't spend a lot of time on it. I mean, this should be clear, if we're going to do this, and I don't think it is. I'm very confused by it when I read it. If I could go on, because I think two is, it's just as confusing, if not more than. So it says it's permitted, delayed improvements will only be permitted if the developer, and the developer, I don't think is defined anywhere here. We have an applicant other places. We don't really talk about who the developer is. But it's permitted if the developer, as part of the final plat, authorizes the city to install the delayed improvements. So the city is going to accept the responsibility to do that if ten years have passed since the final plat. Subject to a sixty-day notice period for the owner to pay, comma, assess the costs associated, there's a word missing or something. I don't know what's supposed to be there. I suppose it's just pay or assess the costs? And I don't know how the difference with those two would be, because I don't know how else you'd do it, other than assess the costs. And it doesn't really say who we're going to assess it to, but I suppose that's the developer that's not defined.
We'd be, well, we'd be assessing to the owner.
Well...
The then-owner.
I think we need to be a little more clear.
Yeah.
So, without trying to be too much of a jerk about it, and be too lawyerly, I'm just saying, I think this needs another crack at it, because I didn't understand it.
Okay.
We have any other questions for staff?
Well, let me ask you, I guess, and we can go back, and you're right, I do know that I was pushing Patrick to get this done last week of the staff reports, and so we can go back and kind of fix these questions that Roger has certainly raised. But I guess, are we okay with the premise of that we're going on these vacant lots, that we're going to, I guess, pass the cost along, if they do not install, or there's no residents built on this property, for whatever reason, that the city can compel them through their title encumbrances to install the sidewalk with their own funds, own forces? So we can work out all this sort of technical things that Roger's brought up.
Now, they aren't technical, I mean, the thing is, because the fundamental question here, you have talked about the city going to install it and assess the costs...
Right.
Against someone, but it doesn't say who.
Okay, well, it would be the property owner.
All right, so the property owner now...
Could be gone.
Is not the developer, that's the property owner.
Right, so we can fix all those, I guess I saw that as more of a...
I mean, I don't think it's technical, I think it goes to the heart of who we're assessing it against.
Well, we're assessing the owner.
Right, all right, and so the owner is potentially somebody who bought it from a developer.
Yes.
Okay, so that gets to, I think Ian's point, is I'm not sure that's the right thing to do, because the owner's already paid the developer and bought the house.
Well, the house isn't there in this scenario.
It has to be, doesn't it?
Well, it's being built, or it's starting of being built.
I guess, if the issue is that you'll never have somebody who's going to occupy the thing without the improvement being built, then your argument is that it'll never be assessed against an owner.
Well, the thing is, like out in timber trails, there's three lots out there that are horrifically unbuildable, and they're just going to sit there forever, unless, well, in this case, the city will have to put them in, because obviously this type of improvement would, or this requirement would have come later. But that's what we want to avoid, you know, now if somebody's going to build on it, and, but at some point, they, we need to have that sidewalk constructed. And we don't want them just sitting on a lot for ten years, trying to make up their mind, you know? Or, for whatever reason, you know, once you start paying attention to these things, I'm, right, so the street that I used to live on in Gardner had a, there was a water pump, or a lift station on the back corner, and the lot was still buildable, whole subdivision's now built out. City has since removed the lift station, and that lot is still sitting there like a turtle. Instead of right in this kind of spot that, you know, it's on the corner, it's, it really kind of becomes a problem for anybody who wants to come down the street and turn on the Gardner Road as a pedestrian. But it's just going to sit there until that lot is built on. And in that scenario, what we would like to be able to do in DeSoto is say, you know what, owner of the property, you've had it for ten years, the development is a hundred percent built out, excise tax has been paid, all these things, you need to install that sidewalk.
If that's the case, I would disagree on ten years, then, why let it sit there for ten years?
Well, that's, that was the question Mike and I talked about, I was, you know, and Steve Chek, our building official, he was more leaning towards the longer timeframe, Mike was a little bit shorter. But, yeah, it can be, I think five years is probably the shortest we'd want to go, but...
Oh, the longer you go, the more chance that the builder's going to be out of business, and we won't have anybody to...
Somebody's going to own, somebody's going to own the property.
Yeah, well...
And if, or, you know, whoever it is.
We could go get the bank to pay for it.
Could be a bank, yeah. Could have gone through a foreclosure, who knows?
So this wouldn't be retroactive, this would just be from point in time moving forward, correct?
Correct.
So what does a sidewalk cost to put in nowadays?
Oh, you're probably looking at it for just a regular knot on a corner, or anything like, so you're paying about three thousand dollars, three to five thousand. And the reason they always go in at the very end, because the, I mean, we've got ADA requirements, everything needs to be absolutely, you know, an inch here or there makes a difference. So... Which makes total sense, I just don't like the idea of the homeowner, of course, you have to see it one way or the other.
Of there, lots that, when the subdivision being planted or started, whatever, is there any way to identify these lots? They're probably not going to be built on.
Well, that's kind of a good point, I mean, if you really want to get, I mean, we should have looked at those lots in timber trails, and if you drive past them, I mean, it's, it's a ski jump, I mean, it's a ramp down to those things. You know, maybe at that point, we should have caught it and said, this is probably never going to get built on. But, you know, once again, that was a fifteen-year ago review, and...
The hindsight's always wonderful.
Yes, it absolutely is, it's perfect.
So, for example, the deferral in timber trails, was that under section seven oh-two? Is that why those didn't get built? Or we just didn't have a rule, and we just didn't do it?
Well, we didn't have, there wasn't a building permit ever issued, so they're just vacant lots that, now the subdivision's entirely built out. Well, I guess there's still a few with the, the deferral we had to go through with the sale of the properties at the county level, because the developer did go bankrupt. We have a new developer, so that should take care of itself. But in this case, they're just unbuildable lots.
So wouldn't this just go into like subdivision planning regulations that says that? That it's, this is spelled out in there specifically? Because if it's, if everybody knows this is the case, right? So if you don't build on it in ten years, then we're going to assess the cost to whoever owns the property. So if it's spelled out in that, then it's pretty clear, and it won't catch off somebody that buys a lot, you know, later down the road, right?
That, and the provision that it is either recorded on the final plat itself, or recorded against the lot as an encumbrance on the lot.
I'm just thinking your comments about catching people off guard, but it shouldn't catch them off if it's spelled out, because it's from this point moving forward. So as long as we adjust the right documents, it says, if you do this development, then you have ten years to do the sidewalk, or the cost gets assessed to you, right? Or am I just...
That is correct.
Kind of way off...
No, you're, yeah, that's the intent.
Because it shouldn't catch somebody off guard, as long as it's spelled out. I think the concern would be if it was retroactive, that somebody all of a sudden has a lot and they get it with it.
That would be a whole different cattle of one. But, yeah, we're talking about moving forward from time this potential text amendment would be adopted by the city council.
So I think, Roger, you're right, this, this thing needs some work, it doesn't say what we intended to say.
I think so.
Think you're right, absolutely right. What we intend is not for the ones where, that are being built on, because administratively, it's spelled out, you put the sidewalk in before you get the occupancy permit, it's done. It's these ones that linger, really. And I think there should be a provision in there also at the ten-year, five-year mark, where we tell the owner, hey, the sidewalk's required, you can either put it in, or we'll put it in. So we probably ought to have a mechanism for, to allow them to self-perform that, before we do it and assess. But that's the intent, so is there, is there...
I have no problem with that concept, I don't know...
Yeah, is there, yeah, that's what I want to kind of hear, what about that?
I think we need, what does everybody feel about the time limit? Ten years, a little too long?
I think it is.
I think it is.
I think five is far better.
I think we need to send it back and let Patrick and, or add resources.
But it's also relative to the size of the development, right? So if you have a really large development, it's going to take more time to develop than a smaller one, right? So it's proportionate to size.
Can you make a directive towards...
The phases?
Yes.
Yeah, five years.
Yeah, five years after a phase is approved, or whatever. That way it'll keep jumping, because that's a good point.
Don, do you have a comment?
It's really a difficult, once you dig into it, there's so many, you know, I was looking back at like the country buildings, townhomes, on those, you start, like on townhomes, you start at the beginning, and you just work down. So, the economy busted in '08, the last 20 lots, you know, there was nobody living there, and they sat there for almost 10 years, until the economy bunch went back. So, in this case, you would be forced to build the sidewalks out for the rest of the subdivision, but there's nobody there to use them. They'd all end up getting tore out again. So, it's really, that's why so many cities, finally, I think, and I think it's a great idea to have it, something in mind, because you do get those two or three lots at the end that, you know, are this hole, and so your community can't use it. But I think that's why a lot of cities, or all cities I know, don't have anything, because there's always an exception, you know? Do you really want to build a bunch of, in that, you know, there's just a lot of situations. It's hard, I don't know if you tie it to time, or if you tie it to time, and how many vacant lots there are. I mean, if there's 20 lots, and there's two houses in there, the other 18 lots have to build sidewalks for those two people that are going to get torn out? You know, it's a, but there definitely needs to, right now, on the oddball lots, five, 10 years later, whatever, it's, I see the problem.
As a builder, Don, would that be a determining factor to you when you were picking an area to build in?
Yeah, and getting back to that, yeah, absolutely, on the, when you buy a lot, that's part of the cost of, just like putting in the driveway, the street tree, the, you know, putting in the sidewalk, so that's all 100% covered, for sure, so. Now, I don't think, I don't, you know, the, on the builder's standpoint, I don't know that it, you know, I mean, it's, that's just common practice, no matter what city you go to, that's part of the cost of building the house.
But if we put it in and said that there was a timeframe in there, and you had to go in there and put that sidewalk in there?
I don't know if it would hurt builders at all, because usually a builder's only going to buy the lot if they're planning on building right then anyways. So, I think what it really would hurt is, if there's one or two individuals that buy a lot, and then they don't, for whatever reason, can't build for five or 10, you know, years, that's not going to hurt them. It's more so a developer, if they're sitting on a bunch of lots because the economy turned bad, is really where it's going to come up, which hopefully that never happens again, so.
Could we put something in there that, if the five years comes and goes, that it goes before us or the council? To say, okay, you get another several years, because his point with the 20 lots, or whatever, on the backside, well, if we're in a recession, that's not going to be built, we know that, and there's no sense putting in sidewalks that go nowhere, that are going to be torn out. Could we put something in this that, when that timeframe comes up, we could make a decision to extend it further?
Yeah, certainly we could have an annule clause.
Yeah, that way, yeah, that way, somebody isn't getting, you know, made to put in something that is obviously going to be trashed and not used.
Lana told me to come turn down your mic.
Fine, I'll just turn it off.
Well, Mike was too, a little bit.
Hello?
Only you, Roger, weren't.
That sticks far enough. Well, just put this way.
Should be better now.
Is that better?
You're welcome.
She hears you nothing.
Yeah, this is true.
Okay.
So we'll send this back to Patrick?
I guess technically we'd move to table, right? I would move to table this proposal.
Well, I guess, we've got a public hearing, do we need to?
Yeah. You can certainly open the public hearing.
Oh, we do? Yes, we do.
Okay. I lost my train of thought now.
Public hearing?
Public hearing. Does anyone here wish to address staff, or? I guess not, so we'll close the public hearing?
I renew the motion to table.
Roll call?
Nancy?
Yes.
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 We have no old business, new business, consider the final plat for, is it Herman?
Yes, correct.
Subdivision?
All right, thank you, Chairman. What you have before you is a, actually, it's a minor plat, we talked about the rezoning last meeting, and the subsequent lot split. At this time, the African chose to plat the property versus to a simple split. So what you have before you is a minor subdivision plat is defined by the DeSoto City Code. Some more than five lots, that's fronting on existing streets, that doesn't require any new construction of streets or roads. It's consistent with the applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, no detailed drainage plan or studies are needed. Like I said, the owner just wanted to split the property and allow for a construction of another single-family residence on that corner. It's pretty straightforward, we do have some conditions, just talking to Andrea, who completed this survey. Part of it was because some of the right-of-way points were shown on the plat, so we want to have a condition that says that those tracks would be dedicated to the city, even though technically, they've already been turned over to the city, but if they show up on the plat, we need to make sure that they're reconditioned, that it does clearly state that those will be right-of-way that's dedicated to the city. We did have a comment about the two legal descriptions, there was a legal description and a suggested surveyor's description. And this does go into the, the county surveyor is all very persnickety about a lot of things, so I've seen some of the surveyors try to put things in that'll just make him happy, even though it isn't maybe quite standard surveying practices, so they don't have to keep going back and back, and getting things re-signed, and as we've had that problem here before. And then we just want, just a note about some of the line weights and some things like that. Other than that, stand for any questions you might have, it's pretty straightforward. Minor subdivision.
Any questions for staff?
I have more stupid questions.
Okay.
Sorry. So, the condition here is for the legal descriptions for the tracks to be inclusive of what the portion that's in the right-of-way? I didn't quite understand.
Yes and no, so if you look on the monitor, the two tracks that are described on the top part of the plat are this track and that track. So they've shown a perimeter description of each one of those tracks. In a plat, what I'm used to seeing, and what the county surveyor's used to seeing, is a legal description for the entire boundary of the entire plat. So what I'm asking, and there's some, along lot lines, north and south and west, in that condition, essentially is define a line that's, you know, that starts here, comes along here, and basically defines the outline of these tracks that I've highlighted.
Okay.
That, which would include the right-of-way track that's already granted right-of-way.
Right.
Because there's some weirdness to it, if you identify that track, its name's Leon Jacobs Trustee. I'm guessing it's fully encumbered by a right-of-way easement, but the fee to it, the title to it, appears to be still Leon Jacobs. If we include that in the plat and dedicate it as right-of-way, then the title will be City of DeSoto, Public Right-of-Way, it'll be much clearer. So that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
To be the boundary, and to just do away with the existing track descriptions altogether.
I'm with you, thank you.
So these conditions have not been met yet?
No, they're not on the plat in front of you, but I do think, you know, they are, they're technical and administrative in nature. You know, the layout, the arrangement, the position, the lots are, have public access, they're legally sized, they're buildable, you know, I think, I think that's why we're comfortable bringing it here and recommending approval, planning commission approval, to have those conditions met before it goes to the council.
So you will have a corrected plat before you go to the council?
Yeah.
Do you still go to the county surveyor?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Who's the surveyor?
Sean.
Don Cahalan.
Cahalan, yeah.
Yes. I worked for him, with him, for several years, yeah.
Remember that part about conflicts of interest, it's still, it's still okay there?
Nah, there was no conflict. I stayed out of his way.
Are you happy with that, Roger?
Yeah, as long as it's fixed by the time it gets to the council, I don't think we have a problem passing it, if you have, if you're okay with the general descriptions in the plat.
Don? Would you entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the final plat for Herman subdivision with the plat conditions specified. Do you want me to read those, Lana? No.
Resecond it. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'd be discuss the foul chickens text amendment.
The foul chickens text amendment.
I like that.
Okay. All right, well, we talked about this last time, and I did include our section on restricted animals, and we were talking about basically allowing chickens on tracks that are less than one acre. So I went back and revised that language, as far as defining that the, it's 20 feet from the side and rear property lines in the backyard of the property. And then also, we would have an application, and I put together a sample application for y'all to take a look at, and that a description of the chicken coop or enclosure is also as part of that application. I think it's a pretty good solution based on, I guess, the direction we were given last time. Once again, I might just bring up the, we have all these other animals that we allow under certain conditions, but this is, and once again, and Lana knows, we do require dogs to be licensed, but of all these others, conditions that we have, only the chickens on less than an acre would be permitted, so I'm certainly happy to take care of this, but it does seem to me a little bit like we're just, you know, we've got all this broad items, and then we've got this one little permit that we require for chickens on one acre or less, but...
It's not unprecedented, you have the Juliana breed pig, that you've got to do a permit for. Just right below it. Yeah?
There are some points in there that I would like to see incorporated into the chickens.
Okay.
Fowls as well. Keeping of the pig, or whatever critters you keep, should not cause fouling of the air by offensive odors. I think that's something, you know, if you've ever been around a chicken coop, they can get pretty bad if you don't go out there and clean them out. So, if that's going to be close to a neighbor's house, I think that's something we should specify, that it needs to be cleaned out, because not everybody's responsible enough to realize, you've got to go out there and clean it out. So in order to be fair to the neighbors of whoever's going to have a chicken coop next to their fence, I think that should be addressed. And also, is this just a one-time thing, or do we need to go out and check the permit, or is it an annual permit, they have to redo every year, or is it just a one-time?
I was thinking it'd be just a one-time thing, but I mean, I suppose we could have them renew it.
And then, when I was looking at, I believe this is Lenexa's, it said deviations in the minimum size, that that can be allowed with approval, as long as they're based on existing, on pre-existing conditions, like the topography or any other unique site. So it's going to be some places that it's just not logical to place it in those specifications. So that might be something that we'll want to consider. And then I'm assuming that once we do issue a permit, and when there again is brought up on page two of Lenexa's, that it's always appropriate for the city to come and check on it, if they get a complaint or something like that. If they can check it out, and at which point that would be addressed. And if necessary, revoked, if they're not taking care of it, just because they get a permit, if they don't address those issues correctly, then we should be able to withdraw it. My two cents, five cents.
Whoever fills out the application, is Walter going to go out and check the location?
Well, typically, these things, actually Lana and I are the ones that typically accept these types of permits, then we would have to either delegate to our codes enforcement division, which I'm in charge of, so so it'd be either me and Walter that would go out and inspect the chicken coop and situation, so.
So, maybe if I could add a penny to your nickel.
All right.
Under the Juliana breed pig, you got subsection eight. It says the city clerk has the right to revoke or deny a permit where they failed to do these various different things to the officer. I mean, to me, I think that, that's probably all you need, is some sort of thing that says, look, we're going to give you the permit, and if we get a complaint, we have the right to revoke it. If they don't do what they're supposed to do to keep it up. So, I'd like to see something like that in there.
Okay.
And I think that's probably, I don't know that you need to necessarily have the same kind of detail you had for the Juliana breed pig, I don't think you have to go through all that again, but I do think you got to say, if you get a permit, if I get a complaint, we can revoke it.
But sometimes if you've got it laid out under what your expectations are, it gives a little bit clearer expectations, and maybe perhaps in some cases, where they're getting these chickens for a 4-H project or something like that, it's going to be, the parents might say, okay, this is what the conditions are, and this is what we've got to meet, you don't take care of the chickens, then we aren't going to be able to keep the chickens. It's not just they're saying that, it's that's what the city guidelines are, so it helps follow, it helps everybody establish what the guidelines might be, that's my opinion.
Well, maybe there's more detail that's necessary.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
I got another one.
Okay.
Lana, last time we talked about this, we were looking at subsection F. And this is the one, if you have more than one acre, you can have up to 25. There, you've got to have a confined space with a setback of at least 25 feet from the property line in the rear yard, and as I recall, at the time, you suggested that you read that as, it's got to be 25 feet from the rear line, but it didn't really follow the sidelines.
I mean, and this is what was adopted, there was no sideline.
Well, since we are adopting this.
You go back and look at the minutes, I mean, that was a discussion, but when the motion was made, it did not include the 25 feet from the side yard setback, it only included from the rear yard.
I would suggest that if we're going to make an amendment to this provision, we clarify that, so that it's consistent with what you've proposed for the new one. so that it's consistent with what you've proposed for the new one, that's twenty-five feet from the side and rear property line in the backyard. I think that's a little bit better, and I think that's probably what was intended. And having twenty-five feet from the property line, comma, and in the rear yard is probably what it should have been, be my guess. But if it's supposed to be twenty-five feet from every boundary line, then I think we got to make that perfectly clear. Depending on how you read it, it actually does say that. Right. Such confined spaces must be set back at least twenty-five feet from the property line in a rear yard. But my city clerk says... I'm just saying, I think we ought to make it clear. No, I agree. I, I, I absolutely. Because if you don't, somebody, somewhere along the line is going to come and stick it to you. Sure. No, I, I agree. Probably a lawyer.
Don, do you have any comments?
I think they've covered anything that I was thinking about bringing up.
So, we'll send this back to you to bring it back to us at the next meeting and follow corrections and...
My gosh, one of these days, we're going to get something that you all like.
So sorry. I would move to table if there isn't any for them.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You need a vote on that?
You can do it by eyes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Or some passes? Table this till next meeting.
Well, that's a good segue to the potential December meeting. For a little bit of a, well, as far as the public hearing goes, we can continue the discussion for the text amendment for the development procedures, because we have a public...
I'm sorry, didn't we close the public hearing?
Yeah, it's been closed.
So, there's no need to worry about a public hearing?
Right, but we will, for the chickens, we haven't advertised for...
Oh, we haven't done a public hearing for that yet.
So, and then there's also a pending special use permit that, for the Burger King, for a sixty-foot tall pole sign that they want to put in play. Anyway, the only, my only point is, we have a potential called public hearings in December. Now, of course, if you look at the calendar, planning commission meeting falls on Christmas Eve.
I will not attend.
No, I don't plan on attending either. So, we move it up a week, and then that wipes out any potential public hearings we might have. I don't know that this text amendment for the development procedures is so pressing that we have to have it done by the, on the seventeenth, because the council meets on the nineteenth, so we can't do that. I suppose we could do Wednesday, the eighteenth, or we can just not have a meeting in December.
Unless there's a pressing need to have a meeting in December, I would suggest maybe push it to January.
Well, that...
They were wanting to open by the end of the year, but that didn't mean their sign has to be.
Yeah, the signs...
It won't be.
Yeah, they've got everything covered except for that.
What's their expectation? Have they made the application?
They've made the application, but we didn't have a date set, so I couldn't submit to the legal record for a public...
I thought we already been through this.
No, we allow them, it's just, you know...
You go away for fifteen years and see what happens.
Okay.
We've been through it three times.
I'm sure you have.
Just when you think you've got it nailed down, it comes back in.
Very slippery one, opens the can one.
Yes, they do.
But as of right now, the only, I don't have, I mean, we've had some discussion with some development issues, but nobody has submitted anything. I suppose if we're going to make a decision not to have a meeting, we need to let anybody who might submit something know as soon as possible that their expectation be that they're going to have to have a meeting in January.
Do we need to do a motion or something and say we're not having one due to...
Well, I think that'd be the way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that there was no December planning commission meeting due to dates and conflicts, not having enough time to process. Well, you said yourself that, you know, seventeenth doesn't give us enough time to get anything, doesn't get a, a public hearing, it's too close to the planning committee, or to the council's meeting. You know, if we go another week after, that's not good. Week after that, shoot, we're two weeks away from having our regular meeting.
You're exactly right. That's why we're, just one of those...
Maybe, maybe to modify that, just subject to call. If there's something that comes up, let us know.
Yeah, if, yeah. I, I think we could just tell anybody who needs to submit a site plan or something like that, January, and that's it.
I think some folks in the room are hoping to have chickens for Christmas.
Give them a picture.
There's a motion on the floor.
Motion to make sure we're all on the same page. Motion by Commissioner McPherson that there not be a December planning commission meeting due to dates and length of time to publish notifications. Second by Schultz.
Works for me.
Any more discussion? Roll call. Eppes.
Manson?
Yes.
Templin?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Okay. Brad, I have something I'd like you to make a change in, under general business.
Okay.
Items A and B, you put under a consent agenda, so it's just one vote. Be just like they do at city council.
Okay, we can do that.
And then just, items C and D will just be a yes or no information.
Okay, we can do that.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to see changed, or... Mike, you have anything you want to discuss, or...
No, I don't think I have any new business for the planning commission this evening.
Brad?
Thanks for the offer.
No, I'm doing good.
Roger?
I wish you all very happy birthday.
Ian?
I'm good.
Johnny?
I'm good.
Linda?
Nope.
Lana?
Nope. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.